Welcome everybody to Tunnel meeting number eighty-eight. It's March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Today, we're joined by Artu, Curtis, Ruffy, Ian, Judith, Nicola, Slate, Tavvo, Vanessa and Walter. Thanks all for joining in. Good to see you, well, to even see you after, what is it? Two weeks of not being around feels like longer, but yeah, great to be at least somewhat back, still suffering a bit of COVID, but we'll keep on keeping on. Um, as you can see on screen, a bit of an agenda for today, starting off with a couple of mentions. Then have a little update on the core contributor role. Then there's room for BGI twenty-four recap. And if there's time remaining, there's room for open topics before the final ten minutes when Nick Almond will join us. And he's the lead writer of the decentralization blueprint by the supervisory council. And after this tunnel, so on the full hour, let's say. Um, a session starts where he'll, well, he will introduce what exactly he'll be doing during the last ten minutes of this tunnel. Then a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a whole bunch of people interested in the mission and vision of Singularity Net and aiming to spread the word and awareness on its mission. We have a whole bunch of self-organizing workgroups that you can join. There's a variety of topics. If you're interested, do hop onto our Discord server. There's a getting started channel. It will help you getting started. Then a couple of mentions, as I touched on already, right after this tunnel, so at twenty UTC, there's a supervisory council session with Nick. And I'd also like to call out a deep funding focus group on Thursday nineteenth UTC. Quick check in the room if any of the organizing members of that session are around and want to add a little bit on that. Do speak up if you want to. Also, sorry for putting you on the spot. I'm not sure what the exact topic is, but this is a focus group listening session.
Vanessa, do you have details on it? Because I do not.
Yeah, I'd love to say I do, but we were discussing it literally an hour ago. We think it's going to be something about the issues around community-driven RFPs and what they could look like. But yeah, I'll post tomorrow and hopefully it'll be exciting enough to get people there.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, yeah, then before diving into the beef of this meeting, I'd like to call out two blog posts. We recently put onto the Singularity Net blog. There's one on the AI platform roadmap and one on the progress towards AGI. And there's two summary blog posts as well, because total reading time for these, for the two longer blog posts is over an hour. They're very detailed, so there's tons of information to deep dive into if you're interested. But there's also a summary, like a shorter version available on both of those. So do check out the blog for that. And then on first topic for today is the core contributors. Um, this has been in progress for a while now. We're this close. It's, it's almost there. Um, I think right now the opt-in is completed for about ninety percent of the people. Um, there's a couple of people in the room right now, which I have to, I won't put you on the spot, but um, I have DM'd you earlier today. If you're interested in having the core contributor role, please let me know. And during governance workgroup earlier today, we kind of tried to hash out a little bit on what the next steps are. Um, I feel like I'm putting you on the spot again, Vanessa, but did you and Felix happen to progress on a bit of a write-up there?
We did. We've got a little draft document, which I just need to put in the chat, so give us a second. But we're basically looking at the whole question of framing this as an experiment and how we're gonna, as a group, make decisions. So we want comments and we want input. So I'll post it in a sec.
Awesome. Thank you. And I imagine it would also pop up in the governance channel, right?
For sure, and in Ambassador General as well.
Perfect. You should be able to post links by now there. Um. Yeah, and a quick outline, the first couple of governance decisions that will need to be made is um, gonna be approval of the Q1 budget. And if you know the date, you can see that there's about broadly speaking, two weeks, two and a half week remaining of this quarter. So I'm personally quite inclined, also in light of the recent appreciation in token value and therefore a budget, um, to not be sticking too long with the quarter one budget and focus on the quarter two budget instead. And this was for the previous quarter, kind of was the same. We spent a whole bunch of time off the quarter deciding on the budget for that quarter. And right now it feels like we still have two and a half week to, you know, do it in advance. So the Q2 budget in theory can still be established before the start of Q2. And in my mind, that would be a big relief, because yeah, broadly speaking, this is not news to most, but we end up spending a lot of time discussing budgets. We are getting more processes and procedures in place, so it will go more smoothly. Um, yeah, it's just, well, right now, Q1 budgets haven't been formally established. And there's all kinds of reasons as to why, but yeah, I hope that that first governance decision on budget approval for Q1 can be somewhat of a quick one, let's say. Not to say it, uh, how to put this, like, I don't want to just rush over it and then ignore what's actually what the substance is. But I would really be inclined to focus on the Q2 budget more so. And then an additional decision to be made, um, by the core contributors is the naming. Um, we've discussed this also quite a couple of times. Um, should it be core contributors? Should it be long-term contributors? Should it be ambassadors? Um. Yeah, basically, I figured it would be best to get the process going and then worry about the naming instead of now having a couple of additional weeks delay by figuring out the name. So that will be one of the, yeah, one of the first decisions to be made by that group. Um, any thoughts so far on this? Anything I'm skipping? Any questions?
Yeah, I felt feeling that the way we're running, the budget Q1 basically is self-generating the kind of output, because I feel like everybody, as soon as it ends, you kind of see that what's doable, what is able to report by two weeks as a work done to kind of lock in the work, so probably you will see like a delay of one month of people doing stuff and I think we are, we have, even the people that have expectations written down as proposals, they are running under that, so it's we can, I can somewhat feel that we some kind skipped budget Q1 and already start focusing on budget Q2 and the next treasury call. But I haven't had a recap from the previous session, so I'm gonna catch up on that over the week. And maybe we can kind of finalize the budget Q1 just all synchronously and already start budget Q2. Like the lessons learned from budget Q1 and then straight into Q2.
That would be my preferred way of doing it as well. It's more of a formality than anything else. Um, yeah, and there's something which also, as you can see on screen, that got mentioned this afternoon to keep in mind for um, well, this experimentation around the governance role. To keep proper documentation and also to review what has been done and what has worked and what has not worked. Um, we picked end of Q2 as a date for that. Um, yeah, just to share that. Final check, any questions on the topic before we move on?
There's just one in the chat asking for an outline on what core contributors are. Could you just go over the criteria again? It was engaging for six months.
Uh, yeah, it's, it looks at the past six months and then it looks for twelve hours of participation. So being present in sessions and six hours of contributions, so like actual contributions, writing documents, creating assets, that kind of thing. Um. Well, there's also a requirement of having done any activity over the past three months. Um, I think that covers. And yeah, basically, this is all tracked through DWork, the task management tool we use. Uh, which also turns it into on-chain data through the Treasury Guild. So basically, we can pull out of the database, we can pull a list of people that fit these requirements. And that's the core contributor group. With a small note that there's room for manual additions to this, just to make sure we're not, you know, fully locked into a system, but there's also, yeah, a bit of human, how to say, a bit of human touch. And well, just for completeness sake, the database output for the current one turned up thirty people and so far, two people have nominated themselves. And these are also people that I think if we run the database again now, when stuff has progressed a couple of weeks more, they would be included in there. Uh, so in my mind, we should simply allow them in the group and move on from there. Hope that somewhat covers. All right, um, moving on to the second topic, which is BGI twenty-four recap. And I'd like to take this opportunity to personally thank Curtis Guillermo, Judith, Tavvo and Tommy. Uh, you've, you've really nailed it. I was, I was very proud, um, having you guys around every time there was a bit of a gap in anything on the organizational side of things during the event, you guys stepped up and fixed it pretty much. Um, yeah, it was just outside of just being lovely to meet you guys. It was also really nice to see you step up and perform and yeah, just thanks for that.
Thank you. Let's take the other device. Thank you. And by the way, um, who do we have to thank here for covering all the expenses? Is that ultimately you or is there someone at the foundation we need to thank? Because I mean, who, who made?
Out of pocket, I can be honest there. Um, I mean, that's, that's coming from the ambassador budget. So in theory, one step beyond that supervisory council.
But who made the decision that they even want the ambassadors there? Like who thought of the whole concept of like, it would be nice to invite ambassadors?
I mean, that's, that, that's just a given in itself. It's not thinking of it, that's.
Is it a given? I don't think it is.
No, I was thanking you. Come on.
Well, no, but I mean, it was just, it's just awfully nice to, to give five people that opportunity and then pay for it in that extent. I mean, it was really an all-covar trip. And it was insanely fun and unforgettable. So whoever I can thank, I would like to thank, I'm just not quite sure where actually this idea originated.
Well, in itself, it's, um, pretty much since the beginning of the ambassador program, the whole having people represent during events. Um, yeah, that's always been on the, bit of on the back burner and this kind of felt like the not to miss event to, to have a pilot on that.
Okay, well then, thank you to the ambassadors program and everyone who was involved, because it was truly unforgettable.
Yeah, fully agree. It was well worth getting COVID for me personally. It was the first time being outside of Europe, um, so that's a milestone to me. Um. Yeah, also just so many people meeting face to face that just, I don't know, adds all the magic, like, I know of most of you that you are a real person, right? I mean, it's a safe assumption, but then actually seeing people and yeah, being able to hang and talk and, and yeah, to me, that's just really next level. I think at some point we should do a bit of a picture. Not sure if right now, right now is not the, isn't the proper moment for that, but should share some front pictures as well at one point.
Yeah, only the appropriate ones.
Naturally.
I went through the pictures I created, but still haven't opened the team one, the everybody's picture. We'll get to that one point. I like the fact that I was able to talk about ambassador to people who are not know, knowing about it and like the decentralized governance part. Because in the BGI, they're like, they talked about basically the artificial general intelligence. And the way I'm kind of looking at it is in an angle that here in the ambassador program, the agents are the people. And now as a collective, we create this AGI and like having these scientists talk about like the game mechanics and the system side of things, how humans interact and what kind of emotions they use and then how it kind of leads to decision-making. So it's got some insights out on board and how to change my own strategies out to workshops and we'll pilot and test out some new found insight from that.
Awesome. Thanks for sharing. Um, well, seeing you turn on your camera, Guillermo, anything to add there? Sorry to put you on the spot. You appear somewhat muted still. I'm not sure if that's intentional, but.
Hey there. Yeah, sorry. Uh, we ran out of electricity at home, so I'm sorry. I'm gonna show this to you guys. The river again, okay? I think we have good connection down here. But yeah, here's family and that's the river and that's a beautiful lady on the river. Um, hey. Yeah, what to say, man? Um, yeah, it was a great experience. Yeah, personally, professionally and uh, yeah, in terms of what we did as a team and representing the whole community, I think it was um, pretty amazing. Um, not only having the chance to meet you guys. Uh, it was a great opportunity to meet a lot of great visionaryries and pioneers from the, from the whole ecosystem. I can go through a lot of details, um, but yeah, I remember what TiVo was mentioning about sitting in a conference uh, meeting and, and seeing ourselves as AI agents to, and analyze this thing that happened. Um, yeah, quite amazing. Um. So yeah, I, I start writing a blog about it that I will share later on. Um, but it's still, it's, uh, it's an ongoing adventure and I hope to see you guys soon on the next one. As soon as possible, you guys, all of you guys owe me a beer. Um, and I owe you a couple of them. So, um, really, it was really amazing. Um, and personally, it was really a treat to know TiVo, Peter, Judith, Curtis and dear Tommy. Um, and it's great for me to see that Arturo is here, joining his first ambassador call to send in the Latam Singularity Community. He's our community host. Yeah, big shout out to you all. Um, and this is, yeah, amazing people, Arturo, so uh, I welcome you to this community. It's pretty amazing. Um, yeah, that's all on my side. I'm gonna, I'm gonna shut up.
Thanks a lot for sharing. Um, yeah, and also as, as been called out in chat, um, to have a blog post shared with the, the people attending, I, I think that's, um, yeah, we should definitely get that going. Right now it's not going yet, but we should. Yeah, it was also very fun, Guillermo, to see you juggling all the Latam tunnel stuff while being there. Looks like you managed. I think you got some amazing numbers on attendance there. Um, I guess to complete the list, Curtis, maybe something from your side to share?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, likewise with what everybody else said, it was a great event, great meeting you guys in person. Uh, it was unexpected, I think, in, in my opinion. Uh, the events that unfolded and the people I got to meet, I got to meet Ian here and a lot of really good people that I just didn't expect to meet. And also like what TiVo said, uh, speaking to others about ambassadors, it was a good level of awareness happening there. A lot of people weren't familiar with what was happening on the inside and so it was good to be able to communicate that out and get feedback on, on what they thought that they can contribute. And it's really good seeing the connections right now. Some of the people here are bridging that gap. So this is amazing.
Thanks a lot and fully agreed. Um, yeah, what to share, what to share. Um. I'm kind of both looking at the clock and looking at the topic list, um, that I think we simply go to the more open topic session, a part of the session. Um, oh, well, just a minor thing, additional thing on BGI twenty-four. Um, Tommy currently isn't in the room, uh, but he did a great job on the fishbowl sessions for the, um, it's called Global Brain Ethics Initiative. Um, there will be more on this next week's tunnel. But he nailed it. He did a ton of interviews, Curtis, you as well. Um, yeah, that will prove very useful for this, let's say, little project that's, yeah, to be shared more next week on that. And then, well, seeing there's still twenty minutes of room. Like to open up to the room, actually. So if you have any ideas, questions, if you want to introduce yourself, if you're new here, um, anything goes, feel free to raise your hand and speak up.
Wrong device. Um, I basically have a question on the core contributors thing. Sorry for going back to there, but you said the, the decision around the, the tag or what we're actually gonna name it is gonna be made by the current people with the ambassador tag, right? Not, or is it being made by the core contributors? Like who's making the decision on what the tag's gonna be called ultimately?
That would be the, the group of core contributors.
Okay.
The last tunnel, um, that, that reminds me of a different point I should share. Um, last tunnel, it was a request, I think by Walter, but I mean, there was a request for having a formal approval by the current ambassador role. And out of ten, there were seven confirmations and three with like no response. Um, I will put that in formal writing, including the names of, well, both agreeing and and abstaining, let's say. Um, but that, that was basically a request to have a formal approval of shifting towards this model of core contributors. And I think that's formally gonna be the last thing, the current group of people with the ambassador tag. Yeah, that's like their, their last formal thing. And yeah, from that point on, it will move, shift over to the core contributors. So yeah, that, that will be one of their governance decisions.
And that means then the program would also be renamed? Or no?
Well, I don't think, no, not, not, not per se. I mean, it's a tricky, tricky topic, like it also became clear at BGI to connect it to the topics. Um, was quite some, this is an ongoing thing, quite some clarity on, um, what the words ambassador program suggesting, we have a program for ambassadors, but most of what we do being community work. And there have been people arguing for, well, we can have a workgroup of ambassadors within the program. Uh, but yeah, to answer your question directly, no, I don't think, um, the name of the role should also be automatically copy pasted to the, the program name.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that makes sense. And is there a timeline on when this first vote is happening for the core contributors?
Um, not directly, like, uh, I have a date date. Um, I've made a push for checking in on the opt-in and that made it from fifty percent up to ninety percent by now, just in the past four or five hours. So I think we'll get that complete, um, by tomorrow. And then once the role is distributed to everybody, we can just go. So technically, as early as tomorrow, I would say.
Oh, okay. Nice.
Unless there's really good reasons to delay that, but I, I hope there's not. All right, then shifting back a little bit on the slides, uh, towards the open topics. Anybody in the room? Any questions? Any topics to touch on? Also, welcome Grace and welcome Tommy. Thanks for joining in.
Thank you, Peter. Glad to see you here. Guess you're feeling a little bit better than, than this morning, so great.
Yeah, I just didn't want to miss out, to be honest. Still pretending I feel fine. Let's put it like that.
You're doing a great job on screen. I hope you won't be collapsing after the meeting.
Well, we'll see.
But please do get some rest.
No, it's all good. Uh, well, Tommy, since you're here, I just spend a bit thanking you for your efforts during BGI twenty-four with the fishbowl interviews. You were absolutely nailing that. Um, but also it's nice to say that to your face while you're here. So thanks again for, 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 yeah, owning that. It was, was great to see.
Well, you know who really deserves it? And I think he did more interviews than I did, was Curtis took over and he did it for not so good, they invited him into a private room. They never invited me in a private room. They kept me out in the hallway. So, so that kind of tells you how well I did. Um, but I had a great time doing it. I interviewed some of the people in here, some of the officials. The best interview I did was Grace. I fell in love with her and she was phenomenal. Uh, she was pushing her husband, her late husband's work, who was one of the founders of AI AGI and um, she was just a darling little old lady who loved giving hugs and she felt like you were gonna crush her if you squeezed too hard, but what a darling and what a great interview. If you see them, I'm gonna try to get them up on the Mattermost channel, um, as I identify them. If you see them, you gotta watch her interview, if no one else is.
Yeah, for sure. She was just smiling ear to ear all the time. So that's a great, I mean, to be honest, all the people you interviewed were, I kind of feel like, I just, that's the thing. Curtis was asked into a separate room for separate interviews, but then you couldn't see them smiling all the time. So who really knows how that went? Uh, suggestion from Water to the next meeting to hold it further from the equator? I'm not sure what you're implying there. Um.
Uh, I think it was colder temperatures, maybe if you guys weren't getting undressed so much. Uh I think it was colder temperatures, maybe if you guys weren't getting undressed so much in the heat.
Uh it was a shock for sure, but um it was, I don't know, by the end, like right before you go home, then you I at least felt like hmm kind of used to it. And then there's the five degrees of the Netherlands again, of course.
Yeah, when I came back home, it was freezing compared to where we left.
On the open topics, uh this week, basically, I started my process of engaging with the content and leaving off where I started two weeks ago. So the first call Treasury Good Operations was great. I saw new people and actually taking initiative to run operations. So that work group is still working, as intended. And then now I'm in the town hall and tomorrow is T V P Bill. Started already checked in. One person has done the uh course, so I don't know, maybe we should have an online course if people here want to go and certify them to be a good T V user. We have many of facilitators here, but haven't seen taken up the asynchronous opportunity.
That would be good. Uh just to complete the shout out, that would be tomorrow at thirteen U T C.
Yep.
If if we are in open topics, can I have two minutes?
Of course.
And and it and it's about B G I. And it reflects something that the grace that's here had said a few meetings ago and and other people. Um I met David Lake, uh who is one of the governors of the foundation and since Fly and uh uh Crandano, they've been asking for some um foundation love. And uh David, it it was a cocktail party, so you know, color the um quality of the conversation. Uh but David was very surprised at how advanced the ambassador program had come. Uh he said he knew as a as a um governor that there was an ambassador program, but he was shocked to see us there, the 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 five of us and and the outreach and uh what we were doing. Um and and he wanted to expand on it and he asked um inquired a a little bit about us setting up an ambassador program uh for Sophia verse and um I had another person approach me from another protocol, asking us if we could help her expand the ambassador program. Um and and I will say this, he asked me, David asked me, because he it got me an invite to a private party the next night. Um I I wasn't the only ambassador at it, but I I got to sit at his table and and we became such good friends that he asked me to go out to the bar to sample two bottles of tequila to decide what to serve to the crowd in there. Over fifty people, so I I I took one for the, well, I took two for the team, one of each tequila. Um and and he just kept buying tequila because he wanted to get the techno nerds out of, and we got him up dancing. Uh Judith did a great job uh encouraging people and we took photos that I can now blackmail some of the C level people with. Um but it was what ambassadors were supposed to be and in the conversation, and I'll just say this, and and Grace, you can react to this, but I I told David, says what's going on in the ambassadors? And I said, well, we're actually having a conversation about renaming ourselves core contributors. Uh because that is the convo that's been going on for a while. And I said, well, actually, what we've done is, and we discussed it, we've built an embassy over the last year and a half. And and I explained to him uh about TiVo's treasury and and Mario and and a a V C was at the table with us. So it was an expanded conversation and I explained about everything that we've created in a year and a half, uh D work, uh task points, onboarding, uh governance, archival, uh video work group, uh writers' work group, strategy, education, and he he was just blown away. And he says, but where's the fucking output? Where are you guys? Where do I see you? Are you in X's or is this? And I said, well, this is our our outcome. And I said, this is the first time uh other than I was at uh the F A U safety conference. I said, this is really the first time the ambassadors have come out in public instead of being in the embassy. And he was like, and you want to change your name to what? He says, what the fuck is a core contributor? And I'm quoting, but remember, it was a cocktail party. And and he he was visibly upset. He says, I know what a fucking ambassador is, no matter where I go in the world. He says, what the hell's a core contributor? I bought him another glass of wine, which was free because Singularity Net was buying it anyway. And and we had a great conversation, but it's the same thing that uh Grace brought up a a couple of weeks ago. What's the output of the ambassadors? We have a beautiful embassy that we've built. What's the output for the greater good, not just for ourselves and getting paid and stuff? And and I think that's really the question that was asked in Panama uh by one of the governors is is how are we outputting? How are we outreach? What are we doing for the greater good? And and that's, I'm sorry I took more than two minutes. Um but that that's my report on a cocktail party. Don't quote anything, don't put it on him. It's everything I said. Uh and also the conversation we had the next night at Sabrosa while we were dancing. Everybody was dancing, some people were dancing, but it was fun time.
Thanks a lot for sharing. Um yeah, I'm not gonna lie, it's something, th- this discussion is far from settled, I would say, uh Grace, by all means.
Yeah, I mean, uh some of you may be aware, I think that's what's relevant to this. It's like, it it it's hard to figure out where to find all the stuff. My cat wants to join the conversation. And um she um she, she's nice. But I think you guys probably know that with, along with deep funding, um we um as the supervisory council are at or task force, we're creating like parallel websites with the same infrastructure. So that there'll be like a family of websites. And I don't know if you guys have been participating in that, but I know that I mentioned to Judith that like creating that family of websites where people have one place to go to. And even just, I I mean, I don't even know where to go to get your YouTube link. And I was just listening to TiVo talking about this educational thing. And it's like, okay, where do I find out about that? Is it only the Discord channel? And I think it's really important that with all the output, that people can go to one place and find it. And that's one of the things we really came up against really quickly as a supervisory council. So um yeah, being part of that little project, I mean, we've talked about from the very beginning that we want you guys as part of that project, so that we're all it so that it's sort of like hmm, it's decentralized but coordinated, right? That we'll all have the diff, you know, we'll have three websites, but they'll all have the same pattern and maybe there'll be some top level things so that people can find everything in one place. It's really also about discovery.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm quite confident that.
Yeah, and Nick is about to talk to you about the name, so I think that's really awesome. Because it's, it might not be one name, it may be different roles. So it's kind of like the perfect timing for the previous conversation. Um or the previous two or three conversations you've been having about how to rename it and all that stuff. I think that Nick is actually gonna guide that conversation for you guys, so that's awesome.
Yeah, fully agree. Um as as Devo put in the in the chat, uh right now, the the our Git book has most of the yeah, resources in a list or or like lined out. Uh in my mind, a lot of that can feed into that uh website with a bit of a, how to say? Touch of paint on top, uh maybe?
And part of it is, as you were, as 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 what um this was Tommy talking, right? Like, is, you know, how do you get somebody like David to be able to find it without going, you know, maybe there's a link from the Singularity ma- main site that needs to be more emphasized for people like that. He's a busy guy, you know, you can't blame him.
Yeah, we are on the menu of the website, but yeah, you do need to know a little bit where to look. That's uh the Git book is linked on that, well, on the bottom of a full text of page, let's say. That's definitely a lot of space for improvement, uh no question there.
And we have been doing it for in knowledge base for several months now. Organizing and restructuring and understanding what is the output. You mentioned output like you, but it is still very distributed, so that session was to kind of grab everything we have been done. And our viral work group is even older uh work group that's also been working on that as collecting all kinds of information and making the backlog impressive. So it's something that has been worked quite early. For me, it started from Marabot and now that has kind of lived its experience. We made so many meetings and stuff that scaled ridiculously, so I needed to go to tech space and people already was there. So now I'm just trying to yeah, get everything there that is relevant. But it'll take time, so next then stay then U T C. So next, in next week. So if you want to join these kinds of conversations and how to get everything in one place and what is ambassador program? How it's put, then that's the session for to attend.
No, I do think we we might need to filter down a little bit even from the Git book to um something like this community website, because there's so much, there's just endless amounts of information about endless amounts of topics. And somebody really trying to orient, well, they would only need like a bird's eye view, pretty much. I have to say, the the Git book has improved a ton lately, um. All right, um looking at the clock. Um also, welcome, um Nick, I believe I spotted you.
I'm here.
Thanks a lot.
Hello, everyone.
And past the ten minutes of this call are pretty much all yours, so if you want to.
Yeah, cool. Um can I have sharing screen? I'm gonna quickly rattle through a presentation.
Absolutely. Should be good now.
Cool. Right. I was gonna quickly share an update of what, and there's an option to stay on. Um and yeah, I'm gonna talk a little bit about onboarding as a decentralization process and a little bit. I'm gonna try and tease out a bit of information from you as ambassadors. Um and yeah, I just gonna quickly rattle through what I'm gonna talk about and then it's optional for you to ta- stay on. Um but mainly, I just wanted to introduce myself to you all. Um so I have been looking at your Git book and um having a sniff around everything you've been done, been doing. Uh had a little chat with Judith, um I'm trying to get a feel for what's gone on. And yeah, there's a huge amount of work that's that's happened here. Um my first impression was this is one of the most coherent communities in crypto in terms of um high coherence, engagement, getting stuff done. So I'm I'm super impressed with what you guys have done. Um and yeah, it's it's kind of, I'm here to support the supervisory council in essentially getting the blueprint document together. So a little bit about who I am, wanting to introduce myself to you all. Um I'm a physicist by background and technologist. Um I was an academic for nearly twenty years. And I've been working in crypto full time and I build DAO infrastructure now. So I'm the CEO of a company called Factory Labs, so I'm mainly a CEO, like I I'm an eighty hour a week crypto D gen have been for many years. And yeah, I'm I'm kind of obsessed on both crypto and A I, actually. And one of the things that um I'm I'm very much exploring the apex of these two disciplines at the moment. And what I'm here to do is essentially, I I'm, you know, I've got a background in academic writing. One of the things that I focused on was collaborative writing. So to take blueprint to a document at the end, I'm exploring ways in which we can do that. So just a bit of context on what I'm doing and what we're working on. I'm an organizational theorist by background. One of the things that I moved from physics into kind of teaching mathematics and cryptography, then education and learning theory, and converged on being obsessed on organizations, particularly decentralized organizations. One of the things that I did a lot of was exploring organizations to find out how to help them change. Um so one of the things that I, the lenses I look on at these things is that organizations are like complex systems. Um Singularity Net is one of the most mature crypto ecosystems. Um as you probably know, it's been around for a very long time. Most crypto projects last less than a day these days. So been around for several years is quite uh astonishing, really. Um and yeah, it's because it's um deep tech, it's got very deep rabbit holes. And I think I caught a little bit of you chatting about the how uh complex and deep everything is here. The technology is insanely complicated and I've spent the last month essentially trying to unpick everything that's going on. Uh get my head around it and mostly failing so far. So I'm here to draw on your expertise and 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 help. Um but yeah, it's, for me, it's an ex, it's an organization exploring a planet and the planet is A I. The way I like to think about these things is like, we're, whenever a new technological plane exists, you you're like landing on a new planet and you get out of your ship and you go exploring. And you might walk up a hill and think that's the highest hill. Higher the hill, the better the technology that you're looking for. But actually, there's a mountain just next door. So what you need to do is explore around. And Singularity Net has explored the whole planet, I think. And um that's kind of what I'm trying to do as well. Is explore what Singularity Net has been up to and explore where um we can get into decentralization as a practice. So just a little bit on how we're doing it. Um we've landed on a kind of analytical lens, which is like looking at an organization. Um and yeah, one of the ways of 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 doing this is to kind of, if you just walk around mindlessly, you might end up in a, one of these holes, rabbit holes and stay there and think that's the most important thing of the organization. So what we've tried to do is create a framework from which we can analyze um the organization. That is, um and and this was inspired by Daniel, just saw him pop into the lobby, actually. Um he's he's a big fan of Stafford Beer, Cybernetics, as am I. I think anyone who's uh interested in organizations will have have come across this guy. Um but essentially, it takes a a systems thinking approach to looking at organizations. It's all about systems being interrelated and nested structures. Um and they're all interrelated to one another. So the marketing function, for example, is related to the A I function and the R and D function very obvious ways, but their own, their sys, all their own systems. Um and they interrelate with one another. So what we are looking for is the interrelation, interrelationship. We're looking at the systems, we're looking at the operations that the the organization does. And we're looking for ways in which we can help it decentralize. So this is all about self-organization. Decentralized organizations are a little bit different. Uh and we think this is the right analytical lens for that.
You've gone muted, Nick. We can't hear you.
Ah, there's a mute button. Can you hear me now? Um so yeah, so what we've done is taken the kind of uh viable systems model, which is a kind of um cybernetics approach, looking at organizations and building our own analytical lens with that, using some of Daniel's research. Uh and I've started building a document. Um it's a living document. Um what I'm trying to do is to go through analyzing the organization using this lens in waves. So this is a consensus building exercise as much as anything else. If you're trying to move an organization through decentralization, moving towards a more decentralized state, um everyone needs to be on board with it. Um if someone comes up with a, this is how we're all gonna decentralize everyone and no one's on board to it, it just won't happen, right? So what I want to do is put our thinking out there in waves so that everyone can see it coming. Um as Esther called it, baking in the oven. Um so sometime, probably the next time we meet. Um, so sometime, probably the next time we meet, I'll bring a first draft of this so we can look at it and then you can start helping me write it. Um, that starts today. You can think of this uh as an analogy. It's like wearing a pair of thermal goggles. And what we're doing is to trying to look at the organization through an analytical lens and look for sites where we can decentralize. Um, so we're looking for opportunities for decentralization. And the one that's really jumped out to me is onboarding, which you as ambassadors are very central to. So what we are looking to do is progressively decentralize this organization. Now, that's probably more important than any network in crypto, because the outcome of this is we end up with AGI. And AGI uh needs to be decentralized as far as I'm concerned, and many of the people here believe in that as well. And that's been baked into the thinking of Singularity Net for a long time. Um, so what does that look like? Well, we need to start progressively decentralizing the organization. That is a process for me of diffusing power. So we're looking at places where um, there's centralized aspects of the system, the some of the most decentralized practice in the space here. I think the ambassadors group is one of the shining lights of examples of decentralized practice here. I think deep funding is another. Um, and I think the whole philosophy around OpenCog is um there to be decentralized. The marketplace is there to allow community generated AI. So decentralization is baked in, but there's obviously more work to do. So how do we do it? We need to expand the number of decision makers in the system. How do we do that? Um, we need to decentralize the operational functions. So we need to analyze the operations and see how that might happen. Uh, and we need to elevate responsibility to more people in the system. So what does onboarding do? It gives us more people and it gives us opportunities to give more pa- power to more people. So more people, better for decentralization. But also you are here. What is the responsibilities that you can take on in the future? Um, because ultimately if this all ends decentralized, it means the community runs everything. So how do we do that? Uh, what is the process for it? Um, just to wrap up, I'm building a model for onboarding. Uh, I've been working on this for a while, but I, I consider it like an earth structure diagram. Decentralized organizations are more like spheres of contribution. Uh, you can think of the people on the outside, the crust, which is might be where most of the people is, right? So what I call peripheral participants. These are your token holding Dgens, the guys who hold AGIX and want it to go up in price and ask you about marketing and stuff like that. They're on the peripheral. Um, but as you go deeper, you get um further into people who have more power in the system and have more influence over the system. And that's what we're looking to chart here. Um, so for me, there's a layer deeper, which is our engaged participants. Then we've got people who are building, uh, building different aspects of the ecosystem, building participants. Then we've got ecosystem participants, which are whole projects building on Singularity Net. And then we've got core participants who are the likes of people like Ben and others who are working on uh OpenCog itself. So um, that's it. That's all I wanted to say. Happy to take any questions here, but we can dig into this for the next forty-five minutes or so. I'm not gonna keep you all all night. Um, but yeah, any thoughts, comments, questions?
Can we have a link to the slides? It'd be nice to be able to look at them at leisure.
I will send them after. They're on keynote at the moment. So not, it's not a link to Google slides at the moment. Okay, darling. My daughter is here in the background. I need to help her out for a second. Um, but yeah, I'm gonna move on. And any other questions before we go into the main workshop?
Um, well, a bit of a practical one. Um, uh, would you like this to be a part of one big recording or would you like a, a separate recording? Because I, I've started recording at the beginning of town hall and could wrap it up and make this next session into a separate one or?
Entirely up to you. Your domain, as far as I'm concerned.
I, I think, I think we should have it as a separate workshop because we're gonna, it's a separate topic and people might wanna look at that separately. And I also feel like as the supervisory council, we might want to keep a record of all of our workshops.
Yeah, good idea. So I'm gonna leave you with a question and then I'm gonna attend to my doors for a minute. Grace, do you mind taking over for a minute? But I'm gonna leave you with this thought for a moment. Let you uh swap this over.
Oh, it's about men. It's a question about men. What is onboarding men to you? Well, I'm straight and single, so uh, anybody knows any eligible guys in Europe. I'm totally into onboarding men, but only one at a time. Okay, like it's not like a multiple thing. So yeah, so Nick is about to, um, I mean, I might as well put it out there. I mean, you're smart guys. You may know someone, right? Um, so anyhow, um, I always make fun of the British. They usually have too many letters, like they're extra U's, they like color, but it has a U in the middle. So here, here he's, he's, he's taken back the debt and taken away one of the vowels instead of adding a vowel. That's what's happened here. So yeah, so when I think about, so it's interesting, one of the communities that he didn't mention is there's a lot of people who are just interested in AI. And actually, they might not be token holders even, but they might be good people to onboard. And a lot of the materials that you guys have already been working on are materials that are supposed to be educational materials to bring people on here. So I mean, I do think this is a great question, like, and and so, and, and you guys have been thinking, should we change the name, right? But one of the things that occurs to me and it's very clear is you have different roles and different statuses for people. It's, it's, it's like different, whatever, different uniforms that people are wearing or different hats that people are wearing at different times. So it might not be that there's even one onboarding process. There might be other multiple onboarding processes. So um, now that we're clear about onboarding men isn't what we meant here, it's what does onboarding mean to you? I would just love to hear you guys, because I know you've been working on that onboarding process. So let, let's hear a little bit from you guys. What does onboarding mean to you? How do you know if you're on boarded? Oh, you didn't start a separate recording yet. All right. Do you wanna do that?
I mean, I can, um, also wouldn't mind answering the question, to be honest.
Oh, let's go for it.
Uh, to me, onboarding is all about um showing what opportunities there are, what, where the potential is, what you can do, what's, what's available. Um, and also makes me wonder, your last question, like, when do you know you're on boarded? That's like, I don't know, are you ever fully, completely done being on boarded? One would hope so, I guess, but at the same time, stuff keeps evolving, right?